I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we are, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is to meet with Renee Van Brocken via Teams regarding changes for Secondary Roads bargaining unit. Prior to that, though, I would like to make a motion or ask for a motion to amend the agenda to change Julie Davidson and May Higdon, meeting with them to May 20th.
I make a motion.
Second?
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Renee?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I had emailed Chris this morning and I said, you know, technically, I guess this falls under bargaining strategy, which is exempt. But in this case, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. I, I think there's generally an agreement about moving to the summer hours. It's just the process that we need to kind of go through to get that accomplished. Is that everybody's understanding that the employees and the board are? Everybody's okay with moving to the summer hours? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, I, I don't think, I've met a couple of the board members, so I kind of jumped right in there. I'm actually in my iPad. I'm in Minnesota. My, my dad had a stroke like six weeks ago, so I've been kind of going back and forth. So I'm not in my regular office today. And I did have another issue to talk with you as well regarding the description of the bargaining unit. But as I emailed, because there is a bargaining unit there, we've got this process to fall under Iowa Code Chapter 20. So let me make sure I'm understanding what everybody's wanting to do, because I think then I can't. I know you, Brian and Stacy, I think have kind of drafted the outline of understanding. There's probably, when I talked to Robin White, the union rep, there's probably a couple of things we need to add to that. So let me just make sure I understand what everybody is looking for. I've got the dates, May 13th to September 27th. And you're gonna have like a nine-hour day Monday through Thursday and then four hours on Friday?
Correct.
So one of the things I wasn't quite clear on, I think might be helpful to spell out a little clearer, is what happens on a holiday? So let's say most holidays are on a Monday. I guess not always is a, well Memorial, this will be Memorial Day, Fourth of July and Labor Day, right? So Memorial Day and Labor Day are on a Monday. So what, what will happen that, in a week in which a holiday falls?
The simplest answer would be you could go back, consider the holiday as an eight-hour day and then you work the extra hour on the Friday.
Okay. Okay, so instead of going reverting back to the regular forty-hour week, work week, like what some counties do is that in any week in which a holiday falls, they go back to the regular schedule, you know, the same Monday is a holiday and then they work eight-hour days Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But you're saying, Brian, is it would be nine hours?
You could continue with the regular schedule up till Friday and then work instead of four hours, work five hours.
That way they get paid for their, their holiday pay plus they get paid for their.
Right. Why couldn't you just, uh, non-holiday days would be Tuesday through Thursday would be nine hours and then Friday would make up the difference.
Which would be a five-hour day instead of a four-hour day. That's, that's what I was suggesting.
But you said eight hours, the regular shift.
Well, no, Monday would be an eight-hour holiday day.
Okay, so. So somehow we have to come up with thirty-two hours, right? From Tuesday through Friday. So I guess however we do it, so, cause eight hours, so everybody's gonna get paid eight hours for the Monday. Let's say the holiday's a Monday. And then Tuesday through Thursday, we just need to come up with thirty-two hours.
Right. We should be working five on our Friday.
And the Fourth of July is on a Thursday.
So.
I think that's easiest, William.
Okay, so if you do, if you do, oh, sorry, I'm with you now. Twenty-seven plus five, so yeah. Okay, so nine, so are we saying nine hours Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? I, let's just, whatever day the holiday falls, I'm just gonna say for, if just today it's a Monday, then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday would be nine hours and Friday would be five.
Correct.
Okay.
Renee, this is Clayton. I don't have the contract out in front of me, but when you, what's it say about overtime? Is that based on eight-hour days or forty-hour weeks?
Eight-hour days.
Eight-hour days, that's why I, that's how this all started. Because after you guys had approved everything, which is fine, we were looking at the contract and it clearly states that everything after eight hours would be overtime. That's when I reached out to Renee, because then we would be paying Monday through Thursday overtime every single day to every employee.
Does anything have to be in writing in this agreement to, what do we put in there for writing to make sure that this overtime issue is taken care of, Renee?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of why the, um, I'm not saying it was a red flag, but that was. So what we're doing here is we are modifying temporarily the terms of the bargaining agreement. So neither party can unilaterally, as strange as it may sound, because of Iowa's law regarding collective bargaining, it's, an agreement between, let's say, the engineer and the employees or the board and the employees is not valid. In fact, under Chapter 20, that's considered to be a violation of Chapter 20. So again, I'm just explaining, you know, what the requirements are. So the bargaining agreement is between the board and ASME. So if the parties agree to modify the terms of the bargaining agreement, we have to have a specific, clearly written memo of understanding regarding how we're modifying the bargaining agreement. So it's not an issue about not being able to do this, because it sounds like everybody's on the same page. We just make, need to make sure that we're, you know, following the process and the rules. And that's why I'm asking these questions, is to be really precise in this letter of understanding. You know, I also think there needs to be a, you know, every memo of understanding should have a sunset clause. So that, you know, it's really clear. So that's what we're doing, Clayton, with this memo of understanding is the parties are agreeing to basically suspend the, uh, you know, the contract. And we're now agreeing for this three or however many, you know, weeks, we're going to modify the overtime. So, uh, what, and that needs to be signed by, you know, the ASME rep and, you know, by the board. You know, or me if you authorize me to do that. So my thought would be is to draft that, you know, just to make sure I understand exactly what the agreement is. Get the proper verbiage and language in there. And then that would be signed by Robin and I'd say probably the easiest is the chair of the board.
Does a local, does a local union president need to sign that also?
Oh, certainly can, yes. In fact, I think that's usually a good idea, but it does need to have, it does need to have ASME signature on it. Because that's, that's the agreement. And Chapter 20, I'm not saying any, anybody would, you know, claim this. I'm not, I'm just telling you what the parameters are, is that it actually, under Chapter 20, to have an agreement directly with the employees is, is, is illegal, you know, in Iowa, under the Iowa's bargaining law. Which I know seems a little odd. So that's what I'm just trying to make sure that we've got the, you know, the proper document in place and we follow those procedures.
And one other thing, I'm, I'm sure that when an employee takes a day off, they're not using up eight hours of vacation time, they'll be using up nine hours of vacation time.
Or using up eight hours of vacation time and working that, on Friday, working five hours.
Can make it up then.
I mean, I would be, I would imagine they could build.
Karen's got something on that.
No, their leave still be just like their regular time. So if they take vacation, they're gonna have to use eight hours vacation. And then the difference will have to be made up on that Friday or Monday or during the week.
But are you gonna want an individual employee doing that? Cause let's say one person takes vacation and then you've got some people working four hours. I don't think you want that.
I don't either, but why can't they take, if they're taking Tuesday or Wednesday off, why can't they take nine hours vacation?
Yeah, I think you can just pull nine hours from their vacation bank.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does that work, Karen?
Yeah, I guess, if that's the way.
Yeah, cause I think you'd have, would that be us? That would really be a scheduling, you know, kind of issue to have one or two employees working five hours and everybody else working four.
I can see that. And I'm just trying to think if we had another modification one time.
I don't recall, not in my tenure of summer hours, summer hours being employed, so I don't know.
Well, it's scheduled as a workday, the nine, the workday is scheduled for nine hours when they take home day off. As far as I'm concerned, to take a nine-hour vacation.
So just as long as the employees understand that vacation time or comp time that's being used will be nine-hour increments. Whereas holiday receiving that as pay is only gonna be eight hours.
Yeah, and I think that's precisely the point, is there, sometimes things seem like a simple process, but there's all these little nuances to kind of talk through. So I do think this memo should contain, you know, some clear, make that clear. So, um, what I would suggest, you know, unless anybody has anything else, is that I draft something and then forward it to you, you know, Karen, Brian, the board. Just make sure, you know, it contains everything that you want it to. Then once you guys say okay, I'll forward it over to Robin.
Know those hours? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but did you need to know the hours? Like six until three-thirty in the afternoon?
I think I have that.
I, I put together a draft on and sent that to address.
Okay, so she already has that. I didn't know she had this memo I was looking at.
We've talked about a lot of stuff here and I'm confused. Are, are we, that ninth hour is not overtime during this period?
That's right. That's what's coming in the agreement she's preparing.
I just wanted to make it clear, cause I kicked around a lot of things here.
Yes, yes. And I, you know, I should have done this in the beginning, so I think it's Dawn, right? Nice, nice to see you and, and I know Clayton and.
I'm John.
Dawn, okay. Thanks.
Renee?
Yeah.
The only other thing I have was, should this include the other ASME contract? Cause we're, at least the office manager.
Right.
Court House one. Specific to Janet.
So that was the other thing. And I think it's okay, this, this technically probably should be exempted, but I don't think it's anything. We've talked about this before and maybe now is really the time. In a lot of counties, the, uh, if there's an office manager or clerical staff in the secondary, in a secondary road department, they are typically either, you know, not included in the bargaining agreement or that position is included in the bargaining agreement. So it all, you know, everybody in that department. And so the question has come up in previous years about modifying, basically taking the position of office manager and including that under, under the secondary road agreement. So that's my second question to you, um, is there's a process and paperwork, of course, that we need to file with the Public Impliment Relations Board, but I just wanted to get your thoughts on that. I think in a lot of ways it makes sense to do that. And I have talked to Robin White about it and I think they, you know, she thinks it makes sense as well. What are your thoughts on that?
Doesn't, doesn't that request have to come from the union?
Well, it, no, it can come from either side. But I think, in fact, I think that, I think Robin might have initiated that email. Cause we've talked about this in, you know, previous years and, you know, but she had sent me an email. Robin is retiring in September, so I think she's kind of maybe wanting to not clean up, but maybe address some of those. And she thought maybe we should go ahead and do that. So I think, I, I think the union is on board with that.
It would make it easier. I mean, if.
She does everything.
Yeah, she's.
All, everything you up there, she does anything.
Right.
A quick sense for her, for the beginning.
It does.
Quick question, wouldn't this be the appropriate time to address that at the same time?
Well, I think so. I mean, I think because that, that kind of answers the question of, do we need to then draft another memo? You know, cause she's in a different bargaining unit, so technically we have to have a whole nother memo. Or I guess we could include something in this memo, so we don't have to have two of them. But if we, if, if the parties agree that we think it makes sense to have that position in the secondary road bargaining unit, I just need to, for you guys to say yes, so I have authorization to proceed with that paperwork. Robin has already indicated that, you know, the union is, thinks that's a good idea too. And I don't know if that was, I couldn't see if, I don't know if that was Stacy, if Stacy's in the room?
It's Phil Fangman from secondary, and Karen's the other one that's been talking. I'm sure you probably recognize her voice.
So I think that would address, I mean, answered your question, Brian, I think that would address kind of both these issues. It takes a while for that process to move through Purb. So maybe we will just, in the interim, I might include that in this memo of understanding that the parties have agreed to start the process to move that position into the secondary road contract. Some board members, are you okay with that?
I'd make a motion if we do that.
Yep, John made a motion that we did it. Clayton seconded it. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. So I think on this draft, I might have a, I'm, because I'm gonna have a line regarding that, just so it's clear. Is, you know, Purb now is, I don't know, it's probably gonna take, you know, probably it's gonna take a few weeks to get that finally done. But the easy thing, once the union and the employer agree, I will, it's a stipulation. And I can get Robin to sign that right away. And that, and that just tells Purb, there's really nothing for you to decide here, the parties have already agreed this. Just make the necessary changes to the certification of the bargaining unit. So that should be an easy peasy thing to do. All right.
I think we're just wait, or Renee drafts that up and we'll look at the draft and and it'll just be need signed.
And we'll sign it.
I will get that to you by the end of the week. I'm gonna be back in my regular office tomorrow, yay. So I will get that to you before the end of the week. I think we have May, May 13th was the start date, wasn't it, Brian?
Yeah, it was what was listed, yes.
Yeah, okay, so we got a little time, but I'll, I'll get that to you at the end of the week, so we can get this, you know, signed and everything done and closed, you know, for sure by the end of the month.
Okay. But they can go ahead on.
Well, no, before the end of the month. Oh, so we have.
May 13th is next Monday.
That's right. Well, I don't anticipate, you know, anything. I'm just gonna draft that. I will get that to you quickly. By, I'll get it to you by Wednesday. I can also send a draft the same time to Robin, so she can take a look at it simultaneously. That's probably the thing to do. That'll speed up the process.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye. So, um, we need a motion to approve the minutes from April 29th, 2024.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Approved claims filed with the county auditor in the amount of $330,536.58.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Approved employee claims filed with county auditor in the amount of $1,607.97.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries, approve hiring James Milka part-time seasonal mower, secondary roads, dollar amount of $18.25 per hour, effective May 7th.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Approve hiring Doug Dur, part-time seasonal summer help for roadside department, $18 per hour, effective May 6th, 2024. I think she's helping Sherwin.
Right, motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Other recorder gave us a monthly report. The recorder's office did, and the amount is $12,774.96.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Approve appointment of Susan Neverman Rural Representative for Jessup Library Board.
Motion to approve that appointment?
Second.
And second, all in favor?
All right.
Approve minor plat for Vernett Youngblood Trust.
Give an idea of where the property is. It was rezoned in January, January 3rd of this year. It's located just to the northeast of Jessup Community Schools. We rezoned it to R3 as the farm is looking to be sold and they wanted to have a lot smaller than two acres. So anytime you go less than two acres, we rezone it to R3, so that's all said and done. As far as the attorney's opinion, legal description, lender consent, owner's consent, plata survey, taxes are all up to date. You can see where we are here. And where we're, the minor platter survey is this section right here. One thing that we did unique on this one is this septic system, by the report, is three and a half to four feet deep. So it's currently being farmed over and you can see we added an easement roughly seventy-five feet by fifty feet to take care of that. That is something that's pretty common throughout the county, is there's easements all over the place where septic's go outside the parameters of the actual survey itself and are farmed over at times. We just wanna make sure that they get deep enough. Best case scenario, we wanna have them three foot or shallower, but there are times when they're in ag districts and there's potential tile around it that dries out the area. We allow them to be a little bit deeper. So this has been reviewed by the city of Jessup, anything two-mile radius. Or, but within that radius is able to be reviewed by the city. We have a stamped approval by Chris Even, the mayor. But again, no, no concerns, pretty straightforward and everything's in compliance.
And there'll just be one dwelling, correct?
Correct, yeah. There wouldn't be any more ability to put on another dwelling on that site, unless they would remove it in the future, but it's a pretty nice newer, modern home. But they could in the future, you know, remove that. And within the R3 district, you could put an apartment complex or something like that. I would anticipate at some point, the growth of Jessup is either gonna go west towards the golf course or potentially north. So I could see this at some point in the next twenty years becoming, you know, an.
Make a motion to approve the minor plat.
Okay, now the first and the second, all in favor?
All right.
She carries.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you, Amber. You look like you got some sun.
Yeah.
Right, we're up to approving the license, liquor license for Buffalo Creek Golf and Country Clubs.
Move that liquor license.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
For the tax abatement for the City of Independence.
I would make a motion since this is a court, court order. Abatement.
I'll second.
First and the second, all in favor?
All right.
Items for discussion, place on file, the following manure management plans, WOFC, Swinehouse, Perry Township Section 6, Thomas Site Number 2, Westburg Township Section 33, Adelton Site, Buffalo Township Section 19.
Special grace, place on file.
First and second, all in favor?
All right.
Chris, second tier Kansas City Fairbank Special Election.
Okay, you go.
You vote?
One for every, everyone. Basically, what the second tier does is pull the votes casted in the special election from Fayette County and combines it into Buchanan County. So I, I am just going to read the totals. It was kind of a tight race. So total votes cast for Tom Hyde is 127. Total votes cast for Michael Gutzmacher is 129.
Close.
Very close. Yep.
How long do they have period of time to, if they wanna do a recount? How long do they?
It's too late.
Too late.
But yeah, they, if, if one of the candidates did we run, did want to request a recount, they could have, but it's passed that deadline. So I just need a motion to approve that and place it on file, please.
I make a motion? Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
All right.
Courthouse alarm calling tree. I put this on there because I think in case of a alarm going off, that maybe dispatch needs to be the first people that are called. It doesn't do us any good as supervisors to get a phone call at ten o'clock at night that somebody's broken into the courthouse, because I'm not gonna run here and walk through the courthouse and try to find a burglar. Just not happening.
I live three blocks away, so I could probably do that.
You're gonna run here and you're gonna look for a burglar in the middle of the night?
But I, I would like dispatch notify first. And I would like a member of law enforcement to meet me at the door.
A lot of times, a lot of times over there to get somebody instantly from over there. If the deputies are out, are outreach to the county someplace for them to get here quickly. And if they're short-staffed and nobody's able to leave the jail area, I mean, it kind of puts a dilemma there. You can't always be guaranteed somebody's gonna be coming from there.
Well, all City of Independence police officers have access 24 hours to the courthouse in case of such an emergency.
And they can come in.
Correct.
So dispatch would have the ability to?
Dispatch either a deputy or a.
Police officer.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a good backup system.
So I just think that dispatch needs to be call number one made. I mean, if you guys wanna be included in it, the supervisors, that's fine, I'm fine with that too, but I am. I am not gonna play Superman or Hero.
You're not gonna strap on your forty-four and come down?
Nope. I tried picking up the end before forty-four and couldn't lift it, so that's not happening. And I'm not sure about having Ben on the call, on the calling tree. But it's up to you guys.
Put smile on there. I can't remember.
Smile or something.
I, I really think that they need to, we need to have mad dispatch as the first.
I agree, first call.
Bless you. Okay.
Cause say that we're on fire.
Hmm.
God is not.
Not gonna come and dump a bucket on the fire either.
The times luckily that I have been called in the middle of the night or early morning or something, it's been because of the false alarm.
Hey.
So I guess my next question regarding that, then would that be for anything that goes on, not necessarily just for Hawkeye alarm? Because I'm gonna refer back to two years ago at three thirty in the morning when I was at Dubuque at a conference, I get a call because our parking lot's flooded because of a water main break. So something like that, are they gonna go to the board first? Cause it was dispatch that called me at that time.
See dispatch and then the board.
Say initially like that, the board wants to be, but that, that wasn't alarm that came then from Hawkeye alarm. That just happened.
No, that, that's what I just stated. So that's why I'm just asking. So for dispatch reference, if there's God forbid a water main break again, that they can use this calling tree for contact information. Yes. Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And let's pray there's not a, a water main break. This was enough.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, we revise, um, the callback list that dispatch is the first call and then they on the calling tree.
I'll second that.
And a first and second, all in favor.
Alright.
Bye. Um, discuss building rental fees for public hearings. Basically what this is on here for is to reimburse the two public, and we paid, the county paid for Raleigh last year. But, um, the court crews paid for the one in Jessup, Jessup, that was seventy-five dollars and Bob Q paid for the one in Brandon and that was a hundred dollars. So that next year it could present information.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, uh, bring the reimbursement to them.
And send it to the next era.
Well, I will probably have to, because your budget currently doesn't have a general ledger item for this type of thing, so I will have to create a general ledger item.
Okay.
And then, um, at this point, it looks like we'll have to do a budget amendment. A lot of it is the publication with all the ordinance changes.
Okay.
Second, get it to reimburse.
Yeah, but first and second, all in favor.
Alright.
And then one more thing on that. Can I get, do you guys have contact information and addresses?
I can, I can get that.
Because I'll have, we'll have to set them up as a vendor and have them sign the W nine and issue the reimbursement. I mean, the W nine's just a formal thing. It won't make, mean anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Brian.
Good morning. And the discussion is selling the excavator, but actually, um, we've got more than just the excavator that could be sold. Yeah, I've got a list of the equipment there that's time to be heading towards the door. Uh, what I was kinda directed is to check around some different ways and I did get the equipment traded. Then they charged about three hundred dollars for a photo list for for an article that way. I did visit with Mark Bearman there at Old Thorferson. And they can be a little bit flexible, but they really don't wanna set a policy where they would wait to see if you guys wanted to sell it, if it's sold, then, then traded in. Uh, but what I got too is I've got, um, Nate Millius here with Big Iron. And Nate can explain how Big Iron actually works.
Yep. Come on, Nate. Alright. So yeah, uh, Brian said, my name is Nate Millius. I'm from Tripoli. I live between Tripoli and Reason. Um, I've been with Big Iron for over, uh, five years, started there in two thousand nineteen. Um, so what Big Iron Auctions is, is we're an online worldwide auction company. So we have auctions every Wednesday. Every week we sell anywhere from fifteen hundred to three thousand items, farm equipment, construction equipment, golf carts, mobile homes, everything. Um, we're a worldwide market, so, uh, once we list something, it's out there for four weeks, uh, getting advertised during our advertising period, people can call, come look at the equipment, you know, uh, do whatever they need to do. And then once they get comfortable a, and have their question answered, then they, we turn to, uh, our auction ends on Wednesday, so then people can bid online and they can bid from all over the country. So once our items are sold, the buyer has fourteen days to come remove them from your property. You get your check directly from Big Iron within fourteen days after the sale. Um, our commission rates are based on a tiered process, uh, you know, the more you sell, the less your commission rate is. For you guys, uh, with the list Brian gave me this morning, it's looking like we, we'd be in that ten percent range, but I would go, definitely go down to nine. And what we do for counties, we sell a lot of county stuff. Fayette County just sold some sheriff's cars for us. Uh, we sell a lot of, uh, wheel loaders, trucks, dump trucks, everything like that. Um, so we set up, uh, we set up a, uh, annual agreement. Okay, so what that does is if you've got a dump truck you wanna sell, you just call. I come out, take the pictures, or one of my reps will come out, take the pictures. We put it online, it gets sold, gets checked. Okay, it's a really convenient, easy process. We do a, a lot of counties, a lot of municipalities. Fairbank sells a lot of stuff with us. They sell used trucks and, you know, just, if, you know, attachments, anything like that. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's an easy process. Um, nine percent commission comes out at the end. So let's say we do this list for Brian, I would come out, we do the pictures, a video of it running, gets out to the world. Those pickups, things like that, they sell to Egypt, China, Mexico, Ukraine. I sold a chopper out of Poolsville last week, then went to Australia. I mean, you guys have no worries about that. Big Iron handles the money exchange. You get your check directly from us. It opens up to a worldwide market. Right now, we're looking at about a twenty-two percent increase value versus local advertising, local Facebook, local auction services. So, a lot of counties in the past have done open bids, quiet, silent bid things, um, we're beating that by law just because of the sheer number of people. We, uh, average around seven hundred thousand bidders hitting our Wednesday sales. Um, for instance, two weeks ago, when all the farmers in the country were planning, it went down to four hundred and eighty thousand. You can see the values decrease a little bit. Okay, we are an unreserved online sale. Once it's listed with us, it is gonna sell. So there is no reserve. We don't have any buyer's premiums. So that sets us apart from Purple Wave and some other places where we're just a straight up auction with an auction commission rate at the end of the day to the seller. So.
So what if we got a piece of equipment saying that sold for six months?
It goes on auction and sells.
It goes on the auction, sold on where? I, I think it's hard to advertise anymore because, uh, people don't look at papers and get papers anymore to advertise in the local paper.
Absolutely.
Some, like an N loader or a Maco or something like that, to probably get basic better exposure, we'd have to advertise it in the Farm Bureau Smokefin paper, which causes more ad advertising.
Correct, and that's, that's, yeah, local, local advertising.
Right. I mean, this is like kind of a no-brainer, actually.
You, you put this on our site, it goes out to the world. And I would encourage you to get on bigiron.com. You can just get on there and look. You don't have to sign up for anything. And you can see how we do things. Okay, so we have a quality department that reviews all of our stuff. We want somebody fifty states away like they're here looking at stuff. Okay, so we gotta take forty to sixty pictures of a, of a, a vehicle. We gotta do a video of it running. Um, you know, and, and you get out to that many people, you always find, find a way. I've got, like I said, Fayette County sold some, some stuff with us, had tremendous luck. We just sold some sheriff's cars. They went to Oklahoma and one went out to Washington State. And the people came, picked them up. We're happy to have them. They're happy with them. They're really happy with the price. So, um, Jones County's got some stuff going with us right now. I mean, we've got, uh, we're getting more and more into the counties and then, and our sales meetings are saying, go talk to municipalities and counties. What I've done this is two thousand nineteen. I should soon go stand at a farmer's yard, look at John, your tractor. So that's what I know, right? I, I farm by Tripoli, had hogs for, you know, twenty years, so. But this is kinda interesting, fun stuff. You know, I've sold road graders now. I've sold wheel loaders and you always think the wheel loaders are gonna go to somebody like a construction company or something, but then all of a sudden a big feedlot in Wyoming will buy that wheel loader and use it up out of their feedlot. You know, there's a lot of different ways to do it, so. But it, it's a simple process. We come do all the pictures with full service. We do all the pictures. We'll do all the advertising. We show you where we advertise. I mean, it's a lot more digital anymore. The Iowa farmer today, I mean, that's even getting pretty expensive to get the exposure that we get out of that, but we do put ads in there yet. Digital advertising, worldwide market, stuff goes to Ontario, goes to Mexico, goes overseas. You have no cost in trucking, transportation or freight. I can go to Hazleton, Jessup, Independence, take the pictures right where the equipment sits. You don't have to invest any money moving it around. And we, we do the pictures there. I represent it. We'll need a representative from the county to answer questions when people call and show people the equipment. We don't send anybody out. The addresses will be published on the site. It just says the town. That's just a real quick overview of how we work. It's, it's a simple process, not hard at all. And I, I can offer you guys, uh, references if you need them. I told Brian I can get something to put together. If you have other counties you wanna talk to and just see how they, they work with us, but, uh, Big Iron's out in Nebraska and pretty much the whole half state in Nebraska around Big Iron is all Big Iron. I mean, all the counties out there, you, you look on our site, you can, you can type in county, it'll pull all the counties that are selling stuff like this.
This is actually would save us doing, I don't think we would have to do any type of notification then because you're actually doing notification.
We would do some, that's right. I mean, it, it, it's public auction. It's out there and then it's, it's announced and we do local advertising. I mean, we we'll include you on our radio ads. I, I run out of Mason City, uh, there's a radio in, in Dubuque that we run out of, you know, so come to Big Iron. We're having a sale for, you know, Buchanan County, Iowa, Wednesday, May twentieth, you know, and then and it, it, it's, it's neat. Once it gets going and you see the number of people, we can show you how many people are bidding on things and watching stuff and it's kinda fun and, and, uh, this older equipment and, and, you know, county use stuff, sometimes it's a little rougher, not gonna lie, but there's always people that want it. There's always guys that want it, I mean. And we, uh, we have a sale every week, so what I would do is set up an annual agreement, like I said. You know, and, uh, then you just would call, say, hey, I got a piece of equipment over here in Hazleton. I've run down a picture. It goes out on the site itself, so.
So it looks like we have about two decisions to make. Number one, are we gonna use right here, this group of stuff that Brian gave?
Well, I think first you wanna discuss how you wanna handle the rubber tarred excavator.
That was gonna be my other thing I was gonna bring up because rubber tarred excavator is probably gonna be used at some point in time.
I need it until December, January.
You need it until the other one goes away. So then we need to make decision if we just go ahead and, and do that, tell that also through Big Iron at that point in time. So that would be two decisions.
Yeah, so if we set up an annual agreement, then it's, it's signed once and it's, it's done. And then all you gotta do is call me and then we revisit it every year. So if you sell two hundred and fifty thousand of the stuff, we kick you down to the next commission rate, download, right? If you sell five hundred thousand, you go lower. You sell, you know, as you get more and more with us, we can, we can definitely work with you and as things go. We work with counties, municipalities, party departments, some absolutes, fire trucks, now things like that, you know, different things. So we work with, with the, the counties and the, and representatives in that. But once the annual agreement's signed, I could sell one piece a week, every week, or I could sell two pieces in July, five pieces in September. I mean, it doesn't matter how we do it. And it's simple phone call, where's the location of the equipment? Take picture. Do all the work. And we can prep it. We've got washers. I've got a cleaning supply kit in my car. We do the cabs and everything. So if, you know, if you say, hey, that pickup's parked in Hazleton at the county shop, I go there, wipe it down, picture it up and sells.
So right now, we get, go to start off, we're gonna be looking at an agreement at nine percent.
Yep, that's what I, with the list he gave me, you know, again, that's over a hundred and fifty thousand, but we're gonna, we're gonna go with that. I mean, I'll, I'll lock that in. That'll be locked in for the next year.
Yep.
Unless you come to me in December and say, hey, we got a whole bunch of stuff to sell, then we can negotiate it down. I mean, we don't, that, that's not like locked in and then you sell a million dollars of stuff for me. I mean, we would definitely wanna work with that.
I, I, I think this is, wait a minute, I, I think this is a simplified thing, so we do not continue putting advertisement cost out there and trying to hit people and stuff because I just, I think this is, and there again, it's gonna, if it don't work in a year, then we're just.
Don't work that for sale. I mean, the annual agreement doesn't mean anything other than here, you've got a, you've got access to me for a year.
Hmm.
And then next year we'll renegotiate. I'll come here again and say, hey, how did it work? What can we do better? And you guys sign a new agreement, we move on for another year, so.
No, you're right. I think it's a lot of.
Then who, who establishes, I mean, there's not gonna be no sales cost or minimum thing or nothing like that, whatever.
Frank just brings, and that's what makes it work. That's what brings people to our auction. You, I talk to people all the time that are buying stuff and they say, first thing is we don't, we love that you don't have a buyer's premium. Second thing is we know we're not bidding against the owner, right? They know they don't have to bid fifteen hundred on a pickup, cause if you set that price, after the people look at it, they go away. But, but if you don't, it'll go past that and go to twenty-five hundred and then everybody's happy.
Kind of like the housing market right now.
Yeah.
Brian, on these pickups that you wanna sell, is that gonna put us in a bind if we sold all three?
No, because what it is, is we've gotten those replacements in over the past year.
Okay.
We've actually gotten four in and sold them three. Well, we can, and if you start looking at the age of them, nineteen ninety-seven, that two-wheel drive, that one has over three hundred thousand miles on it.
There's still market for it. And those go south, they get down into Chihuahua, Mexico.
So we had the discussion, we've tried to auction here in, in the courthouse before, where the pickup sold for less than what we could have driven him down to the salvage yard for. And, and that's where.
I just say that, you know, everybody goes, oh, man, it's no reserve, right? I can't put a price on it. I don't wanna give it away. Tell you, do it and see how it works. You don't understand that, you know? I had a guy the other day, well, I don't know if you know Ben Rensh, he sells a lot of equipment with me out here and, and by Jessup, but he had a two hundred thousand dollar tractor. He said, I'd be really happy if I got two hundred thousand in my pocket. And he was really worried about putting on my sale because it's no reserve. Well, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars later, after my commission rate, he was still happy. I mean, it, it works. We wouldn't do this if it didn't work. Just a public auction online every Wednesday.
Wonder, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to go ahead, enter an agreement. And there's something that I wonder if we can just have Brian sign that agreement or the chair needs to sign it also.
That's based on the county. Some guys, the engineer signs, um,
I'll sign it.
Sometimes I have to go to the courthouse.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll need titles for the vehicles. Obviously, we sit, send those out to our office. They get transferred at the time of the sale with the bill of sale. Um, sometimes that gets a little difficult, getting those rounded up and, uh.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion and that we entered into this agreement, uh, and it's gonna be, the first year, it's gonna be a nine percent and the chair will sign.
Yep, and I will have that agreement drafted and then sent in here. Um, you want me to email it to you or just gonna, Brian?
Brian, I'm back.
And you guys can call, any, any questions or anything, call me anytime if you see it out on the website, you got questions. But I would encourage you to go to bigiron.com. It's kinda fun to look at, including for a golf cart or a boat or anything.
I'm intrigued. I am looking for a golf cart, actually. I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Great.
Thank you.
I'll work with Brian on the details of the agreement and, uh, we'll get that off to you, Don. Thank you very much. I had a great time today, guys.
And I'll tell Marcy we're planning on selling on Big Iron next, after the new machine arrives.
Right. This way, if we have any, if any, we have any repairs or anything to do it, at least we're getting.
Yeah, if the machine's gone, it spells as is.
Discuss Hazelton C fifty-seven.
Yeah, because Hays, City of Hazelton has not been billed or invoiced for this project. And as I sent you the documentation from the mediation, it basically, it clearly stated a good faith down payment of sixty-five thousand dollars shall be made to the City of Hazel, by the City of Hazelton on execution of the resolution approving this agreement, then fifty thousand annually interest free for ten years until paid. Well, that was two years ago. We have not received a payment yet.
We did get the sixty-five thousand.
We received the sixty-five thousand. So, basically as it stands right now, they owe us a hundred and fifty thousand.
Do we, do you need us, do you need a motion to invoice somewhere?
Are we supposed to be invoicing? Is someone supposed to be invoicing? I, I don't know. This was done before me.
I would say we have to invoice them. You don't pay anything unless you get an invoice.
Yeah, I know, I know Jessup doesn't.
Do I do?
If, if, if the agreement was, Cannon County had to pay, you wouldn't be paying until you got an invoice.
Yes.
So I would say, yes, we have to invoice.
Okay, because it's the, it states in there that they signed, that they are to annually submit a payment. So on the other hand, I don't, I don't know how this agreement was set up with all this litigation and secondary roads.
Okay.
Yeah, we were kinda left out of a lot of the discussion too. Gary was directly involved with this one. And um. Yeah, I would, it goes back to if there's a, if there's this agreement signed in court, should you have to invoice even? You, you've got an agreement.
You do have an agreement, but I know like they're getting audited too, so they would have to have something in their books, like some kind of a, an invoice, I would assume.
Okay, so the checks would end up coming into the auditor's office. Is it something that secondary roads should be invoicing? Or the auditor's office? And I think that's the question at hand, isn't it?
I, I would just like to see this address so the county can get their money.
Right.
I would say. Next question would be, is the city of Hazelton gonna be able to pay that?
Well, and that, that's the other kicker of it. So they've missed two years' payments of a hundred thousand dollars. It clearly states that it's only ten years. So now is the county gonna be out that other hundred thousand? I, I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I don't.
So, I would assume if they have to pay it or.
It states annually interest-free, so they should have been paying it all along.
Catch up their back game sometimes.
I'd make a motion that we have the uh, our nurse have been an invoice, so.
You got a first and a second? Um, for the, the back? How much you want to submit it?
Submit their back payment, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
That's the, the Chris Rock, a good point, you know, we don't have to outside of that ten-year thing.
No, I mean, see, there's really nothing to repossess.
The city does? Yeah, no, we're repossessing from them.
I, I would stay far away from the city of Hazelton. They've already got this project pretty much paid for on the county's dime, besides this little bit.
All right, discuss federal funding agreement for W thirty-five project.
Yeah, this is a separate agreement than the other. This is the STBG, Surface Transportation Block Grant. And it is in the amount of one point, one million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. And I don't know how I come up with those exact numbers, because they're, they keep seeming to vary from what we had at Intercon. But I'm not gonna argue, because they keep growing, it seems like, too.
They're adding on inflation.
I wish. So nonetheless, this is uh, federal funding. I have submitted this to the county attorney's office, so I haven't heard any response back. It's a standard federal agreement. And this is the funds that we argue about there at Intercon.
Would you snip that to the attorney's office?
When I got in this past week, because the situation was, I hadn't been seeing any agreements come in. So I emailed the DOT saying, hey, I haven't seen any STBG agreements on this project. We're trying to get it moving forward and. And he says, shorthanded, people left, I'll work on it. Next thing I know, within the hour, I had an irritten agreement. And then I forwarded, I gotta say, this was just last week, but it could have been midweek.
It seemed like Tuesday, maybe?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
What's the, is this one of these things, assuming we get that back for better or?
Uh, is there a huge rush on it? Clayton, it's always good, best to have your paperwork in hand, or suddenly somebody, some bureaucrats can say. Pull that project from the letting, because we don't have these agreements yet. They were not, even though we're not selling.
Intercon has sent you this?
No, this actually came through the Iowa Department of Transportation. And the funding, the funding stream is through, it's federal funds. That goes through your council of governments and then they take a percentage of it.
It takes a percentage.
Yes, that's.
Oh, I don't wanna put a delay on this, but uh. It's always nice to hear back from our. Is this pretty a standard form on me?
It is definitely.
Has this form been seen by our attorney's office?
It has been, yes, because this is not, there's never been any issues in the past. This one doesn't even get into the designs. Uh, safety funds get into the design requirements. This one doesn't so much. This one basically says you have to maintain it in an acceptable condition. Yeah, I think that's towards.
It's subjective.
Yes. This one, it really is big on not discriminating, and so that's where your Title VI rules come into play. Karen's not here anymore.
Let Brian move on with this.
authorize the chair to sign probably.
Brian's request for the W thirty-five project with the STBG grant. And have gone and signed up the paperwork.
I'll second that.
A first and a second, all in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, we are down to public comments. Three minutes, be polite, people.
I just wanted to update you on a property that I was out on last, uh, two Tuesdays ago. On a hundred uh, street, which should be north of the county. Uh, there's two rock quarries on that road. If you go north and have a one fifty, go east, it's nineteen forty-eight, a hundred street. And at that time, I was authorizing a building, accessory building, all in compliance. Found out though, at that time, there's an established uh, corgi sanctuary there. It was established before. Um, they moved there in twenty twenty, prior to the twenty twenty.
What kind of sanctuary?
Corgi.
Or dogs?
I think I know where it came from.
So, anyway, um, the uh. That property actually would be in compliance prior to the twenty twenty adoption. Which would actually now make that property rezoned to man, the manufacturing district. So in the process of that, we had a conversation between Brett Butler, the owner. He has a board. They're actually been licensed since two thousand fourteen with the USDA. But I will be submitting you a business permit for next Monday. So I was just gonna give you a week's notice if you wanna go out and visit the property. So, as my county vehicles in there, the next day, we get a call from an attorney on a potential nuisance complaint from a Fayette County resident. I just wanted at least um, make you aware that I've made three phone calls back to the attorney, have not been, had a call returned. So, anyway, I told him, I said, it's a good idea to get you into compliance. Why? You know, my predecessor didn't get into compliance when they moved there in twenty twenty. Before that, I've done research and they had alpacas and all different kinds of exotic animals at that location. So it's not like it's something new. This new structure will actually uh, give the dogs a little bit more. Shelter, obviously, and probably any nuisance concerns with noise should, should be helped. By this building.
And they greeting dogs or they just?
No, he rescues them.
There's a rescue thing that sounds like it's nationwide from all the paperwork that he's, they've submitted to me. I told him about getting him on the agenda for next Monday. He's already been in. They're gonna put in a septic system for the new, new, new building. It's gonna have a small bathroom. And then the, the building itself's already been staked out. It's in compliance, not with property line, direct amount.
Before you, before you got the business permitted, moving stuff, do we have to see something from the USDA on this?
Yeah, I have it all. I'll, I'll do all that stuff by next Sunday.
USDA is all fine?
Before Thursday, I'll submit Chris, everything will come up to you, but I thought I'd give you a week's notice if you wanna get there and.
What's the address on that again?
Uh, nineteen forty-eight.
I can't imagine there's a nuisance complaint. He used to be in Jessup and we never heard the dogs bark.
I mean, I was there and, and uh, no issues. A couple barks at me and then they were quiet. I think there's roughly four acres there, pond, and I was on that road. Uh, a dozen times when the rock quarry expanded and we traded some ag land for expansion to the uh, west. I never even knew it existed. And so I wouldn't have known it existed until he called me for a. To confirm his setback requirements on the building. So. I'll let you know if the attorney calls me back. I called him back three times last week and it hurt nothing. But I just wanted to give you a week's notice. If you wanna go out to the property and look at it yourself, I'll be submitting that stuff on Thursday.
All right, guys. Thanks for the heads up.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Um, Bob Q, Brandon. On the uh, economic development uh, webpage, it uh, shows that next year. Donated, contributed in the diamond level, which is between two thousand by a thousand dollars. And uh, so, contributed by next year. Now, I have a couple of questions that maybe the lawyer needs to look at. Lisa Kramer is uh, you know, charged with that. Now, because they've accepted money, does that make her an agent of next year? That needs to be looked up. And uh, Clayton's on that committee, whether right or wrong. Does that show bias for the upcoming elections? Should he have to recuse himself from any votes? So, you know, is that something you will check into? Do I need to contact the county attorney? What, what needs to happen? So, there's some things that need to be answered before next uh, Wednesday's meeting.
My understanding that, I think that was made last year. That was last year's uh, contribution. And I don't think there's a one coming forward, this coming year.
How much money was, I mean, as I saw, since the diamond level? You remember?
No, I, not off the top of my head, I don't.
So I know it's four thousand, nine hundred, it's easier to say by a thousand, but the minimum is two thousand and the maximum is like.
That was for the previous year, but my last meeting I was at, that uh, they have, are not making a contribution for this upcoming year, new year.
But I think we need to, you know, for your benefit, we need to decide on whether you're considered to be biased uh, as far as any upcoming election. And Lisa Kramer, is she an agent? Does that make her an agent? I don't, those are things I don't. So how do we, how do you want to proceed?
Well, we got all kinds of investors, I mean, in economic development. We got utilities invest into their sources. So there again, does that make her an agent of REC or anybody else or any other utility company?
Well, well, people see this as a very key issue, you know, so anyway. That's just a couple of questions I have.
I can shoot something up too. I don't think that um, Clayton should have to recuse himself because there's not a. Typically, one recuses themselves if there is a personal financial gain. And so he's not voting on the paycheck.
Yeah, there's no gain, there's no personal gain on my part whatsoever. And then so all the other boards and stuff that we belong to, you know. If we gotta start refusing to everything that we do around here, I mean. There's gonna be one of us have to drop out of the vote all the time on anything.
That's probably why it's unfortunate to have three of you and not a five-member board. It's kind of strangles you because, you know, you two can't talk together, or you two can't talk together. Unless it's, you know, is it a violation of open meetings? It's gotta be, it's got to be very difficult.
And just like uh, on the Olfway settlement. I mean, we're in agreement, we're gonna be, some of that money that the county's getting for that is going to Pathways. Well, I'm on the Pathways board too. And as a board, we're, we're, we're a regional member of Pathways. So does that make it wrong because we're a member for them?
That's all I got, so.
All right.
Anybody else?
Thanks for listening to everyone over the last, I think, forever. Those who haven't been able to make it to the P and Z meetings may be wondering why certain things are in the wex. The P and Z Commission is made of something incredibly influential, men and women, who are committed to doing the job they accept it. Not only did they gather and study other counties' wex, but they followed the county comprehensive plan and the county zoning ordinance. Iowa Code three thirty-five specifically states that regulations are to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. With that in mind, the threshold set for turbine placement, that is less than fifty-five. As the comprehensive plan states, that is the threshold the county has deemed for preservation of the rich soil of Buchanan County. The comprehensive plan was adopted in June five, two thousand and six, and is stated in the plan as a useful life of twenty years. The zoning ordinance lists towers, including wireless communication towers, under principal permitted uses of the manufacturing district. The zoning, zoning ordinance is clear that towers belong in the manufacturing designation. This zoning ordinance was passed and adopted on the fourteenth day of September twenty twenty. It seems next year we should have been aware that these ordinances were in place when they came to Buchanan County. Their expectations were apparently that the county could simply change them when told to do so. That would be a terrifying door it opens. But please support the wex that was so carefully and thoughtfully written by our P and Z Commission. Thank you.
Next up.
Um, last year, my wife and I visited the construction site of the wind turbine project just north of New Hampton. We did not see any of the blacktops, so that had been removed for the turbine's concrete base. I'm sure they were not going to stockpile it for the next twenty-five to thirty years. So where did it go? I would guess that it probably been sold. There were lots of piles of brown clay-like dirt, which would probably be used to backfill around the concrete base. So now what happens when it comes time to decommission the turbine? Will next era, or whomever owns it, replace the topsoil with the same CSR-made topsoil? Or will a lower quality topsoil be used instead? On two different occasions, I had black dirt delivered to my home from two different companies in Independence. Both of supposed good black dirt, delivered had sand, clay, and rock mixed in with the black dirt. Not exactly good for placing soap on it. It sure makes you wonder if the same thing will happen when it comes time for next era, or whomever, to replace the same quality topsoil as they took out.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice? All right, motion.
Motion, John.
Second.
A first and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everyone.